Our story began in 1991. Over time, the mortgage industry has experienced many changes, but our core values here at CIS have always remained the same: character, integrity, and service. You don't need to be a mortgage expert to get a great financial plan. You just need to work with one. Our focus and dedication have allowed us to help thousands of families reach their dream of homeownership. Whether it be refinancing your current home, buying a manufactured home, or purchasing investment property, we have a product for you. We invite you to find out more by visiting our website at CISHomeLoans.com or like us on Facebook. CIS Home Loans: mortgage loans made simple. Equal housing lender.
Our hour has arrived and it's time to call our meeting to order. I want to welcome each one that's come tonight. We have a good deal of business to attend to tonight. Several items, including a public hearing. Before we start the meeting, I'd like to have an indication in our pledge, and then I'll have just a few announcements that will be of interest to our public, and then we'll get started. Let's stand together. Father in heaven, we pause to give you thanks for another day of life. Lord, we thank you that we are able to assemble tonight and to conduct the city's business and to better our future and to help our citizens as we work together. Lord, we ask that you would bless our nation and help us, Lord, to have a time of healing. Lord, we ask that this vaccine that's been made possible by these scientists and labs would be soon distributed and given to the people of this nation and the world that we may overcome this virus that's plagued us throughout the year of 2020. Help us to have new courage to face the next new year, 2021, and that we may endeavor on new things that would be great for our people. Lord, just guide us through this life as we take it step by step. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. In the way of announcements, public announcements, I'd like to tell the young people of our community and the parents that might bring them down here that we'll have Santa at City Hall on the front porch from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. on the 10th and 11th. That'll be next Thursday and Friday afternoons. We'll have Santa in a rocking chair taking orders for Christmas. So we want our young folks to come out and see Santa. Can't sit on his knee this time, but you can talk to him in person.
What time is that, man?
That'll be at 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. on the 10th and 11th on the front porch in his rocking chair. And then tomorrow night, we'll be having the Christmas parade for the city of Hamilton. And it will be beginning, I'm assuming, at 6 o'clock. 6 o'clock. Rodney knew the exact time. I was saying 5:30 or 6:00, but at 6:00. Reefs Across America will be celebrating here on the 21st at noon at the east door of the courthouse. We'll have a ceremony there, including a bagpipe playing music while we lay the wreath at the monument there at the corner of the courthouse. And then we'll walk to the city cemetery where the other 188 wreaths will be placed for people to pick up and distribute to the honored veterans of our area. We'd like for folks to attend that special ceremony, Reefs Across America. It's just started a couple of years ago, but it's caught on real big and it's gone throughout the nation. And I think it's a good effort. Just so the public will be aware, our city government, including myself and all of our councilmen, are going to be considering unkept properties and areas of concern that make our city look terrible. We've got some places we've got to address. So we'll be looking at a workshop real soon that will look at our ordinance, how we may focus on that ordinance to get some of these places cleaned up. So you can be sure that we're all interested in this. We're answering to some complaints, but we had concerns before the complaints came. We see these sites every day as we travel around our city. We want our citizens to take notice of this. If you have an unkept property that you've abandoned some time ago, you need to clean it up, tidy it up. If you have a building that needs to come down, be destroyed, dismantled, it would be a good time to consider that. So we want to try to clean up Hamilton as much as we can, make it eye appealing for people that might want to come here and live. We've had some folks say, "I might want to consider Hamilton as a place to live if you clean it up a bit." So I've had those comments made to me. It hurts a little bit when people say that to you because we're trying to grow this town. We don't want the folks to not move here because they don't like how it looks, for goodness sakes. We can do better. Before we get into our meeting tonight, we do have a public hearing that we need to attend to. The public hearing is pursuant to Section 1-74 through 1-76 of the Hamilton Alcohol Beverage Ordinance. It's being held for the approval of a transfer of ownership and the continued sale of retail beer off premises only and retail table wine off premises only at the current, the Stock Market located at 2915 Bexar Avenue West, Hamilton, Alabama. The applicant and new owner of this already approved establishment for the sale of beer and wine off premises only will be Good Partners LLC. All procedures for transfer of ownership have been made and are compliant with the city of Hamilton's requirements. At this time, if there's anyone present who would like to speak either for or against the transfer of ownership and continued sales of retail beer off premises only and retail table wine off premises only, may speak now. If I hear no opposition, I'm going to make this as a recommendation that we approve this request from Good Partners LLC, the new owners of the Stock Market at 2915 Bexar Avenue West. And we'll need a motion to approve that. We got a motion, we need a second.
Second.
A second. All in favor? At this time, I'd recommend that we conclude the public hearing and proceed with our regular meeting. We'll need a motion to close the special hearing, public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Scott Tara made the motion.
I'll say.
Scott Robinson, second. All in favor? Thank you. Now we'll enter into a regular council meeting session. Item one is a recommendation to approve the minutes from the November 16th, 2020, City Council Meeting. We need a motion.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve our minutes. All in favor? Item two would be a recommendation to approve our council's payroll bills for November 2020.
Okay.
Motion. Got a motion from Robinsons, Scott Tara, second. All in favor of paying our bills? Let's do it. Thank you. Item three is a recommendation to declare a 2003 Crown Vic Ford, last four VIN numbers 8791, and also declare a 2006 Goshen Bus/Van, last four VIN numbers 6779, as surplus equipment no longer needed by the city of Hamilton. These items will be sold on Gov. Deals, and the funds will be deposited in the General Fund. We'd need a motion to declare those as excess surplus equipment.
Motion.
We got a motion. On this, Mr. Sims, we need, in our second. All in favor? Thank you. Item four is a recommendation to promote Tracy Lee to Assistant Foreman for the City of Hamilton Street Department. And I believe Tracy's got 13 years with us and was recommended by his foreman to be his assistant. We need a motion for that promotion. Wade made a motion.
I'll say.
Mr. Sims got our second here. We need a vote on that. All in favor? Thank you. All righty. And we'd also recommend that Tracy's rate of pay be moved by $1 per hour, making him make $17.65 per hour.
I'll make that motion.
Scott Tara made the motion. We need a second.
I'll say.
Got a second with Scott Robinson. All in favor? Thank you. Item six would be a recommendation to approve the purchase of 10 Air Packs from emergency equipment professionals incorporated for the City of Hamilton Fire Department at a cost of $73,352. This purchase was a budgeted matter in this year's budget. But we need to approve.
I'll make that motion there.
Robinson made the motion. We need a second.
I'll say.
Scott Robinson, second. All in favor of 10 new Air Packs for the fire department?
Mayor, like I say, Tim did come last week for a work session and explained this was in his budget. It's to take most of his budget that he had for equipment, but you were good with that.
We'll be good.
He made it clear that you was okay with that.
We'll be good.
Okay.
Okay. That's going out on the limb, so to speak, Tim, to put all your budget in one purchase.
We'll be all right.
Okay.
And this was, you also said, because people didn't know that this was buying like 10, that you needed 20?
Probably only about 20.
So probably next year or the next.
14, 15, next year.
In the next couple of years, you'll probably get some each year to get what you need. I'm just making it clear for the club. Which will last for years.
Yes, I shouldn't have to worry about it again.
Right. All right. Thank you.
Item seven would be a recommendation to approve the purchase of a mini excavator for the City of Hamilton Water Department. The excavator will be purchased from Thompson Tractor Company for the amount of $56,120.57. And this purchase was also budgeted in this year's budget. Is that correct, Rodney?
Yes.
We're in favor of that. We need a motion.
I'll make my second.
Okay, we got a motion.
I'll say.
Not second. All in favor? Thank you. Rodney told me how much damage they do when they go in a wet yard with that heavy backhoe and tear it up. This rubber track excavator will walk through there and not make such a mess that they'll have to satisfy the property owner on the next time they have it.
Rodney, can that be used for installing like new water lines? New sewer lines? Will get grants or get something to get new? That's something that we can do ourselves.
It'll be used on a daily basis.
Multi-purpose. Just one of the items he mentioned is how they tear up a yard when they go in it with that.
Rodney, do you have any type of way of transporting that? Kind of works out there?
We currently have a trailer that we haul our ditch load on. I think the big survey will afford.
Go ahead.
It's not a city, it's that big backhoe. They drive it over where they go.
And Lamar County at the same time. As you know, when you get out into the rural areas, there's a lot of expense per mile, the same as it was here in Hamilton, but you may have two customers paying for it, which can't happen. They'll never pay for it. So it's important that we use this as a total project and maintain a very tight fiscal control of this to be able to pay for it. But we're starting. We're very much engaged with that. We would expect to have the rest of Marion County completed in about eight months from now, if things go well. We've got some challenges ahead of us to be able to make that work. We're very grateful, our partnership with Alabama Power to get a lot of areas that's on their poles, not just our poles. So they've been really good to work with. We've got a lot of initiatives with them and they're helpful to us. I want to brag on them. It's really, really important. Obviously, in 2017, we felt very strongly this could be a significant initiative to create more vibrant communities. Mayor, you were talking about folks moving in. We're all about that. We're all about growth, economic growth, education. Those two things were critical, we felt. We felt like E. Nudson would be a big issue in time, but it's hard to change people. And then, lo and behold, COVID-19 shows up. Now it seems so simple, right? The elderly don't have to transport themselves to a wedding ring where there's a bunch of sick folks already. They can do a lot of things online. I meant to, that in Northwest Idaho here, this project is probably the most aggressive in this nation right now. Obviously, we've made a little bit of end ropes with some grants, and that's been, that's helped us sleep a little bit at night and not worry about bankruptcy as much, although I still worry about it a lot. She doesn't worry as much as I do. We expect to spend, well, it's hard to say. We will move into Fayette County relatively soon, but we're getting our folks in Marion, Lamar, finish those up. Moving into Fayette. We've already moved into Winston a little bit because of some ground issues with City of Hable, and they're completely done. We'll be leaving in Franklin County, the lower third of Franklin. And the Franklin County folks have been with us a great deal. We were disappointed in a reset government initiative that would have helped to do the rest of Franklin County because those folks are hurting as bad as we are here in Marion County. But that didn't work out, so we've gone back to Plan B for about those. So it's going well. We have growth challenges, to say the least. We're in the process of hiring some folks. That's all good things. The tax abatement will help us to do this heavy lifting as we're about to lose a fair amount of money. But we plan on that. Our goal originally, and talking with the mayor, with other mayors, and all of y'all have been super as cities, knowing good and well that if we all do this together, we're going to raise all the votes at one time. And by the way we've done it, has allowed us to go out and lose money because we're able to do the cities and then move into the rural areas. So we're very much engaged with that. The tax abatement is tremendously important toward that, and we thank you for your consideration to it. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Or Brenda will, when you get to real stuff.
Well, I appreciate y'all doing all that. As we know, internet access is valuable more now than ever. More people working at home than there was worked on before. So you got to have it. I mean, it's just part of life now. For y'all to be able to provide it, especially to rural areas, that's a blessing to those folks that wouldn't have it any other way. There's no way they could ever get it if you didn't have it to help provide it, so.
Well, I appreciate that, and it's true. And I didn't comment that much about it. We know it's helped preserve a lot of jobs.
Absolutely.
It's not only to have the correct speeds and capacity, but it's got to stay on. You know, if we're going to recruit industry here, it has to be second to none. People working from the home, hard to make paycheck here. It's not working really well. So we tried to plan this from an engineering perspective. Being in electric, it totally helps a whole lot with that because we're used to reliability. It's something on our minds all the time, as well as cost. So we tried to build our system, and we're not there yet because we still building to build all these redundancies within it. So we've got a lot of work still ahead of us, at least three good years. Trying to move back to two to get the job completed, so. Thank you.
You've even limited this agreement to just a five-year. All you're asking for is a five-year period of agreement. Is that correct?
I think so. What was the best scenario?
So it's not dragged out way down the road. You're going to do this work fairly quickly.
If we don't get it fairly quickly, we'll die. I mean, we can't stay in this mode forever. So we've got to build and we've got to get it right. So, yeah.
Scott, do you have anything that you'd like to say to the council in the way of further explanation before we vote?
I just want to clarify something with this over 10. On the application, there was $100 million on here, and we talked about today maybe $50 million. But the $100 million is just.
Total project. The labor and everything, you know, so that the operating cost, the cost of actually delivering the internet service, that's all in that $100 million.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor.
It's not cheap.
Any other questions, or Mr. Prosser, or Ms. Upperton, this time? Y'all ready?
Well, just one question about doing this. Is it going to create some more jobs through Tom Beebe over a certain amount of time?
Yes, it will. In fact, we're looking at now, that we're going to be hiring several. And so they'll be working right here out of Hamilton, which will be a good thing. And we've already employed a number of Hamilton folks, so it's going to be really good.
Okay.
Do you know about how many, I guess, ballpark numbers for us, people that you're hiring, early?
Well, if you look the way we are now, you know, we have 60 or 70 contractors, and we're gradually going to be moving now. All 60 or 70 won't move over to electric, but we're having high-tech jobs inside our company, very high-tech stuff. We're actually going to be employing three relative to what we're seeing. So some of those outside jobs will be moving over in time there. So it's hard to say exactly because of our budget, and it kind of depends on our growth. But I would say we're saying some are 20, 30, and it could go higher. Depending on how big we want it getting. I should comment about that. The only reason we're not trying to get big to be big, there's just so many people that need help. And we're, we really have a conscience about that. You know, when people beg you and mamas call you and their kids can't get educated and they live outside the area we were ever planning on going, how can you leave them out? So it's, we're going to get there, but it's, we're still seeing.
Mr. Steve, is there any money available? I know Congressman Idaho helping spread instrumental happen, wasn't it? Has any more money from Western that might go toward this? Or is that something?
Yeah, you'll see an announcement. I can't really talk about it yet because we're still under a kind of a gag order, so to speak. But there are going to be some monies come out announced that will help here. Going to be interesting. Not as interesting as we had hoped. We had big dreams. So, but we still do. But life sometimes hands you some challenges, and you've got to persevere regardless of that. So there will be some additional announcements on that. I had a conversation today, this morning, with two of the Congressman Idaho staff people, and that's the exact subject we were talking about. I've talked to, Tracy knows about it. We're going to put pressure on him. I had Franklin County's representative in office of the day, and we'll be talking to Tracy more. And there's going to have to be some state work done to create a fund. I think there's a lot of emphasis on that. That would help a whole lot, especially these areas that are tough. So, yeah, I think there is possibilities for that. Yeah, absolutely.
All right, Tracy?
We thank y'all. We thank y'all for the explanation of what we're trying to achieve here and how it's going to help all of us. At this time, I'd like to recommend this resolution to our council for a motion and second, and hopefully we can see fit to vote it in.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say the motion.
I'll say that.
Scott Robinson made a second. Those in favor of this abatement? Can I get you guys?
Thank you very much.
That's the kind of consideration, right? We've had a guest come in here at the last minute. We're going to ask him to kind of give us a rundown. I tuned you guys in on the radio this morning. Y'all were having.
Always entertaining.
Well, I had a lot of conversation on one subject. So we're going to let you talk about the COVID, just to let in what your take is that maybe coming from the state, we're facing more crises, or you think we'll get past it. Just an opinion. I mean, I don't want it to be a to-do wall here, but I do want you to talk about it because it's a concern of mine right now.
Well, that's a concern to all of us, Mayor. Let me say first of all, before we get into that, how much I appreciate you and your comments earlier about doing some things to clean up our town. And I do think that's exactly right. That's very important. I go back to the story that the mayor in another part of the state shared with me one time. His town was recruiting a new industry, and they picked up a gentleman from that company that had flown into the county airport, and they had sent a driver to pick him up. This corporate executive ended up driving him out to City Hall. And he never made it to City Hall. He told the driver to turn and take him back to the airport. He wasn't injured. And the mayor was an accident bonafeuza and came calling, trying to find out what had happened. And said the guy had driven by a few spots where they had not cut the grass, around some stop signs and a few areas like that. And said, "If I'm in a city that can't take care of needs as small as that, they can't beat my needs." So you'd be surprised, some of the little things that different corporate executives look for when they come to our communities and believe in. They send out folks, you know that, before they even come meet with us. They send out scout teams and kind of look around to see if they even want to meet with us. And so it's those little things, which I know dilapidated properties is a big thing, but it's just things that sometimes we might not think about that can really. I mean, Steve knows this. The main thing you're not, you're trying to do is you may not win a project in the first round. You're just trying to survive and advance, and survive and advance, and not get yourself eliminated. So I appreciate the efforts of the council and things to be going forward with on that. Again, I said this all the time. We talked about it on the radio this morning. I'm going to brag on Steve and thank him and his staff again for the diligent work that they're doing. I'm biased, I'm a customer, and I love it. And so we're very grateful for Tom Beebe. I love it. I was in a meeting in Gadsden several months ago. I've told you this, probably about a year ago now. And they were talking about Broadway. And so when it was over with, I walked up, introduced myself to a few people, and they looked at me and said, "Where are you from?" I told them, "Oh, my gosh, you got Steve Prosser. You're so far ahead of all of us." So his reputation is out there beyond just our district. To answer your question on COVID, does many in our community have? I've had it. Don't worry, I'm two weeks out of quarantine now. It hasn't changed my opinion on some things. It was tough, but let's be honest, there's a lot of folks suffered a lot more than I have, so I'm not complaining. It's not changed my opinion in the fact that I do not want to send the governor shut businesses down again. I know a lot of law. I know a lot of lawmakers have spoken with her and her staff to explain to her that we feel like we know a lot more about this virus than we did eight or nine months ago when everything was shut down. That doesn't mean we don't take it seriously and wear our masks and do our due diligence. But we've got a lot of small businesses. Y'all know that they're still hurting. Matter of fact, I was on the phone with a lady from Hamilton on the way up here from a meeting in Gwinne a few months ago. She had qualified and got some EIDO money back when the virus first hit earlier in the year and she's applied for what they call Revive Alabama and sent that information out to all my business owners about a week and a half ago to let them know, I'm not asking you to do it, I just want to make you aware that this opportunity is out there. And so we was trying to walk her through some of that. We've got businesses that have not recovered yet and a business shutdown, I think, for a lot of them will be the final straw. So we've got that issue coming up. I talked to one of my hospital administrators today, was in a meeting in a conference call with Congressman Adorhope. And once we got out of that, I asked the hospital administrator, do you think we're going to shut down elective surgeries and outpatient procedures again? They're not, as he would say, they're going and blowing and their numbers are up, their census count is up, which is bad for the families that are sick, but for folks who are running a hospital and trying to keep our local hospitals open, that's a good thing. So I don't think the governor is showing any signs that she's going to do that. So for our three local hospitals, that's also a good thing in terms of COVID-related news. Is there anything else on that you want me to discuss? I'm trying to think if there's any other angle?
Basically, are you foreseeing another statewide shutdown because of the COVID? Do you think we're going to get past this surge of spiking the numbers?
I would say based on the conversations I've had in the last few days in the governor's office, I will be flabbergasted if there's another shutdown. You know, everything changes. We've all seen that. Nothing set in stone in the last eight or nine months. So I've learned to never say never as I get to be an older man, but I just don't see the governor meaning towards that right now. I think she realizes what, how detrimental that would be to the people of the state. Is the mask order being extended? That expires next, or this Friday, the eleventh. I saw the day where Dr. Harris is saying he would not be surprised if the city governor do so. I had a lady from Lamar County call me several weeks ago and I learned very quickly this was not going to be a pleasant conversation. It was on that very subject that she called and she said, I understand you're my representative. I said, yes, ma'am, where do you live? And she told me, I said, yes, ma'am, that'd be me. How can I help you? That was the end of the pleasantries. I can almost hear her pound my desk over the phone. She said, I demand that you tell me your opinion on the governor's mask mandate. And I said, would you like an honest answer? She goes, that'd be welcome. And I told her, I said, well, I'm not crazy about it because I worry about governmental overreach and we all know how one step could lead to something else and something else. I said, let me ask you a question. I said, are you a Christian woman? She said, I am. I said, the good Lord instructed us to love one another and bury each other's burdens. I said, so I carry my mask at all times. And I said, if I walk in the room and nobody's got one on, I'm probably not putting one on. If I walk in and see someone there that's got it on, I'm going to put mine on, just as a courtesy and respect to them because they obviously have concerns or they wouldn't have theirs on. And that's not asking too much for me to do that, but the difference is I would prefer to see personal responsibility. We're adults. We don't need the government telling us to do that. So I, I wouldn't be surprised, Wade, if she does, but as far as the mask order extension, I don't think we're going to see another government, another shutdown of a business. And I'm hoping right now we're not going to see anything. Like we talked about the hospitals earlier because our hospitals, I'm telling you, people don't know this, Winfield Hospital was scheduled to close later. It was gone. And we worked our rear end off, as did several other people, to help bring back a lot of money. We brought back money for the Hamilton Hospital. We brought back money for the Hable Hospital. And it's, we've been really blessed. And I'll commend Congressman Adorhope's office and Shelby's office. It's been great. I've called them. Their, his chief of staff has called me twice at one o'clock in the morning. And so I want to really commend Adorhope and Shelby's staff for being so involved in what we've been trying to do in this district.
When the vaccine becomes available, are we all going to be taking either vaccine or we're going to be taking multiple types of vaccine?
My understanding is it's two phases, twenty-one days apart.
Okay.
Now, who's going to put it out and we know which one, and I mean, let me go ahead and address this concern. I've already had some folks call this morning and or send me a private message saying, are you going to be in favor of the government mandating the vaccination? No, I'm not. Now, while I would love to see all of our parents vaccinate their kids, but I think we've all seen the risk are much greater to have not had the vaccination than it is to take our vaccinations. To me, that would be moved toward a communist, socialistic society. If we're going to come in and mandate that adults are going to be told by the government, you will take this or you won't or not. So Senator Orr has already started drafting, authorizing along Earth's way, he's already started drafting a bill that in Alabama, you cannot mandate anyone to take a vaccine. That should be a personal choice, especially when it's still somewhat experimental. We're not talking about the polio vaccine that's been around, you know, sixty or seventy years and we kind of know what to expect. I'm confident our epidemiologists are doing a good job, but it's still new, still new.
Trey, what about schools? Is the state, is the superintendent of state, does he? Or is the governor looking at any other shutdowns like that?
The governor is encouraging. If you've seen the reports earlier, or late last week, she's encouraging a return to in-person learning. And I don't know if we fully appreciate, guys, the job, our teachers and by extension, our parents. I think parents are going to have a greater appreciation for our teachers than ever before because so many of them are having to help their children with virtual learning at home. And I know this sounds critical and there's no reflection on our administrators or our teachers. I understand why virtual learning is necessary, but I joke and say they call it virtual learning because it's virtually worthless because you cannot replace a classroom teacher in what they do. You can't, can't put a price tag on it. You can't replace it. But I, I think we're going to continue. There may be individual systems, Ross, that have to do some things as they see a really big spike in their specific area. I don't see the governor sending everybody home. I just don't because you think about, we've been closed to some extent since March. We have lost for the better part of semester. Now we're beginning virtually a second semester in terms of days that we're losing. That's my greatest fear is how do we catch these students? Some folks have just said, we were going to let all of them repeat their respective grade. Well, that sounds good. But the last time I checked in Hamilton, our buildings were built to house grades K through twelve. They're not built to hold a fourteenth grade. And so, I mean, there's, there's a lot of tough decisions to be made by the state superintendent and the local board. And I will commend Ann West, our superintendent, has done a phenomenal job working with her administrators and our teachers and under the hand they've been dealt. I think we should really be proud of what they've done, because they have certainly not been ideal.
Tracy, we appreciate your visit and appreciate your comments, coming to see us every chance you get and keep in touch. We need to know something, please let us know.
And we've already drafted a letter and made a couple of phone calls on the highway grant you talked about earlier.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Appreciate that. Mr. Foshee, Ms. Overton, we thank y'all for coming, other guests, our own department heads, the news, the media. If there's any other business, let's hear it now. If not, you'll need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion with adjournment.
We got a motion. We need a second. Got a second. All those in favor of adjournment? Thank you for being here.